August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, Board of Douglas County Commissioners, five thirty business meeting. Want to welcome those of you who are with us at the old courthouse and folks joining us on Zoom. To get us started today, I do just want to address that, um, as some of you may know, last week's meeting, our August tenth meeting, was removed from YouTube after it had been uploaded. Our staff appealed that decision and, um, are going through that process. We have one that appeal. However, that is twice within less than ninety days. Um, so moving forward, we have decided that we will not record general public comment in order to maintain, um, that access to the YouTube page. So, um, just please know moving forward that that is the case and that last week's meeting, was pulled due to YouTube's content policies. They are not specific with us about, um, what violates their policies. So, well, we do know that, um, it is not any of our normal business. It is general public comment. At this time, we have decided that this is the best compromise to preserve access to our YouTube page. Um, and for folks to watch the scheduled business of the county, um, retroactively. And folks who wish to make public comment or listen to public comment can join us on Zoom or in the courthouse. So with that, each action item on the agenda will offer its own opportunity for relevant. Please stop interrupting. Each action item on the agenda will offer an opportunity for relevant public comment about that topic. We ask that you wait until the agenda item you're here for comes up for discussion. Additionally, near the start of our meeting, we will invite folks to provide general public comment to the commission, which is a time for addressing issues not on today's agenda, but related to general county business. General public comment will not be recorded and shared on the county's YouTube site to ensure compliance with content policies. To hear general public comment, individuals can join us live on Zoom or here in the courthouse. We will first call on folks who are here in person and have signed up on our signup sheet. Then we will turn to any online commenters who are with us tonight. If you are on Zoom, please plan to use the raise your hand function when the time comes and listen for staff to call your name. All comments will be limited, limited to three minutes. And we ask that everyone give their full name plus Douglas County residence for meeting minutes. All public comments should be directed to the county commission. We reserve the right to mute and remove any speaker who is vulgar, rude, or inappropriate. The public should also know that the comments received by the commission during our meetings do not represent the views of the Douglas County government. If visual aids are used during the meeting, the presenter will share their screen. Please know that online participants will not be able to view them without a computer, smartphone, or tablet during tonight's meeting. But materials are published online for your reference also. Lastly, a recording of this meeting will be available on our YouTube page and website. With that, we will get started with the consent agenda. Do you have any requests to remove anything for further discussion? Is there anybody in the public who would like to discuss, remove anything from the consent agenda for further discussion tonight? Is not a part of the consent agenda. If you would like to review the consent agenda items and tell me if you wish to pull any of those for further discussion. Is there anybody who's raised their hand on Zoom? Okay, please stop interrupting the meeting. You will be able to make public comment when the time comes. Do not disrupt the meeting further. Michael, please stop disrupting the meeting. If you do not stop disrupting the meeting, I will ask that you leave. You can make your comments during general public comment.
This is Commissioner Portillo. I move to approve consent agenda items one point one through one point ten.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jill, will you grab me the signup sheet for, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see in front of me. Apologies. I'm, we're gonna go in order of the commissioners. I'm gonna move Rick Heard into the panel. Rick, we're gonna, we've got him. And then, uh, we're gonna move Jeff and Joe Dean Lipton into the panel as well. Rick, when you're in the panel, if you want to come off mute and, uh, oh, outline the item for the commission, that would be great.
Very good. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thanks, Rick.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. I was appointed the fence viewer for a dispute involving, James and Jeffrey Licktie. And I presented a report dated August fifth, uh, to you that includes my findings. But essentially, um, the brothers own an eighty acre parcel, because of the prior use as grazing on all of it, uh, and the change of use on the north half. There's a need to install a fence. And under the, uh, fence viewing statutes, once the use is changed, it triggers the responsibility of both parties to pay one half of the cost. So, uh, according to the statute, I did go out and I did walk the line, uh, that would be, uh, where the fence would, would be located, from east to west. At the west end of the property, probably the last one-fourth of the property, there is very dense vegetation. Elevation changes. There's a creek that runs through. It will be more problematic to install a fence at that end of the property. I understand from the comments, submitted by, uh, Jeff Licktie that, uh, there has been a survey done, and the property line located, which should, should be of assistance to the parties in determining where it goes. Uh, but basically, uh, I concluded that there should be a fence built. Uh, I have estimates of the cost. Those were taken, um, really by consulting tractor supply and orchelins and getting the most, uh, reasonable estimates for materials that I could find. I want to make one other comment. The statute requires, uh, the, the minimum fence to sub, to satisfy the statute is a three strand barbed wire fence. I don't know of anybody that builds a three strand barbed wire fence. If you're gonna have cattle, you really need at least four. And in my estimates, uh, since one of the parties has agreed to provide the labor for free, it keeps the price well under what it would normally be for both parties. And I recommended a four strand fence. That is in excess of what the statute requires. But then I noticed that Jeff Licktie's comments, um, I think he agrees that a three strand fence would be inadequate, given the use, the proposed use. So, my recommendation is that either a three or a four strand. I think in this situation, due to the cost savings of labor, a four strand fence splitting that cost would be very reasonable between the parties. Do you have any questions that I can answer?
Thank you, Rick. This is Commissioner Reed. I do not have any questions. Other commissioners? Okay, I'm seeing head nods, no. So, um, at this time, I think we'd invite, uh, both, James or Jeff to provide comment if you would like to, or any, anything else. Okay, go ahead and come forward. You just state your name and residence for the record, please.
My name's James Scott Licktie. I live at seven twenty-six Arkansas Street here in Lawrence, Kansas. My property I own has a county address at nine fifty-one East nineteen hundred Road. Normally, I probably wouldn't be here, but since there were statements submitted into record for this, I thought that I would take a minute and respond. First of all, I'm sorry, something like this between family members had to come to this level. Statement was that this came about only because my brother was building a house. I've tried since my dad passed away in March of two thousand and nineteen to get something established for a fence. So that if something like this did occur, that they were building and it might cause an issue with cattle and livestock production, we wouldn't be to a point where I had to make scrambled decisions to take care of the welfare of my livestock, which I've had to do this year because of issue. A statement made under statement number three from my brother and his spouse says, "The fence proposed by Scott, as described above, satisfies the statutory requirements, except he proposes a four strand fence instead of a three strand fence." Let me set the record straight. That recommendation came from Mr. Richard Heard, an attorney I have never employed in any way, shape, or form, regardless legal or otherwise. He has been employed by the Douglas County Commission to evaluate the situation and come up with what he recommends the best solution to remediate this problem. So it states, "It's my proposal. This is not. This is one hundred percent Richard Heard's recommendation." Pricing and everything else, when he called me, is exactly what he said, came from sources such as tractor supply and orchelins. I had no input. He's a neutral party. That's why I came to the county, knowing the statute says that the loophole is, is that it does state that a boundary fence must be put between property owners and each property owner is to share the cost. A statement was made in there that I made comment that Kansas has a left-hand, right-hand rule. Incorrect. Kansas has a statute regarding boundary fencing. Common practice that is accepted and followed in Douglas County with every major livestock producer I've talked to, and livestock producers in other counties around the way have that same understanding. It's just been an understanding between property owners that there's a left hand and a right hand rule. Basically, you stand, look at your neighbor in the middle of the property. You're either responsible for the left hand or the right hand. As Mr. Heard is well aware of, and we've discussed, that is not labeled or phrased such in the Kansas statute. Therefore, we had to go to a fence viewer. This wasn't my choice. I've tried to work. The idea of the survey just to put a fence in, the survey was actually performed so that he could get an official plot plan filed with the county to build his house, which is requirement. That's a requirement of permitting is that you do a survey of your property to show where that's at. Um, I saw my brother at the Quick Trip at twenty-third and Haskel one day. He was telling me his surveyor got held up due to COVID. I asked him at that time if he would like me to help pay. He said, "No, that would be fine." In consideration, I'm the party that has been willing to provide all of the labor. If you look at the price count out, that's like, uh, eighteen hundred dollars for a three strand, twenty-four hundred dollars for a four strand fence. I'm willing to do that for several reasons. Probably first and foremost is I am aware, my brother does have a medical condition with his heart. He doesn't need that kind of stress. I have a son and some other friends that are willing to help me put that in and get that taken care of. The other reason is, is I need protection for my livestock. The piece of fence that they were looking to cut, they were gonna put a culvert in so they could cross to their property. It's fine. That's their property. But not once have I ever denied them access across the tube mentioned in her response to be able to access her property and do anything and everything want. I've even offered to help. So again, I apologize it's come to this. I wish there was another way, but when I was notified by my brother through text not to contact him anymore, I had no other choice. I would rather work this out between family. We can't look back and change things. We can just move forward. I would ask that the county strongly consider the four strand fence. His cost would only be a hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty cents more for one more strand of wire that I will be putting up. You can look at the differences in the labor between the two, and I think that's more in consideration than what they were looking for, for half of the survey that they were respectfully asking for, which I'm not a lawyer, but I'm assuming is probably more of a social, civil issue than not something that the county really should be having to deal with. So I would hope you would do that, do consideration that my willingness to work with this and minimize out of pocket to get something established could be taken in consideration into your decision. Thank you for your patience. Thank you, Ms. Heard, for all the work you've put in on this. Um, I appreciate your questions. I appreciate your thoroughness of taking the time and the heat to walk our property line along the survey boundary that's been staked so that you could make a decision on what needs to be done. And if anybody has any questions for me, I would be happy to do it. I just really appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions at this time? Would you like to make any comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I apologize. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, okay, thank you for clarifying. My apologies. Okay, we'll go ahead and, um, open this up for, oh, I'm sorry.
Is, we've tried to move, Jeff, if you want to speak, you need to accept the invitation to become a panelist. But we've sent multiple attempts and, and they've not had them to move over.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll go ahead and open it up for, um, public comment. See if anybody else is here for comments on this item. If, if you are online, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring this back for discussion amongst commissioners. Any thoughts commissioners would like to share in response, uh, or any clarifying information after hearing from both, um, Rick and Jeffrey? I'm sorry, James, I apologize. Well, um, I just want to state that I, uh, Rick, I appreciate your, uh, time and efforts in this and your expertise of, of this very particular state statute. And so thank you for, uh, doing that labor on behalf of us, um, and providing a, a thorough report. And we appreciate your comments, James, and, um, helping us know your perspective and kind of how you got to, uh, making this request of us, so. Barring any further comments from commissioners, I mean, I think that this is a, the statute is pretty clear. Um, and, and in this instance, the division will not be equitable, will not be even because of, um, one property owner decidedly paying for, uh, absorbing the cost of the labor. So I do think that the recommendation, um, as presented to us is fair, um, and in line with the statute. And also I can appreciate the, um, the four strand fence and that that, um, maybe is outdated language in the statute, perhaps, in terms of the reality of what that need is for cattle owners, um, and property owners. Any further comments from commissioners?
Sort of have a question. I thought I saw John here, but he left, or maybe Rick can answer it specifically to the legal requirements. I mean, so that, that statutorily, it says a three strand wire, and if we start adding things, you know, where does that go? And, and does that set up for, you know, what would be? Rick, what would, what would happen if someone said, "Well, wait, you're going beyond the scope of what it says statutorily required," or does the law allow us to go beyond what's statutorily required?
Well, that, that's a good question for the county counselor. However, um, you know, the statute merely says that an adequate fence is a three strand fence. I don't see any prohibition in you acknowledging that more is required, given a certain use. I would suggest that if it is a three strand wire and both sides are required to pay the, for one half of the cost of labor, and the labor is not provided free, that would be far more money than if, uh, both parties agree to pay for the materials for a four strand fence with, uh, James Licktie providing the labor for free. In other words, it's in a way a bargain for, um, Jeffrey Licktie. However, that's, you know, I, I, in my opinion, a four strand is a reasonable thing to install there because they're gonna run cattle, and I don't know anyone that installs a three strand wire. Okay, but, um, strictly speaking, that's all that the statute requires. But there's no prohibition against you adding more to it, as far as I can tell.
Yes, and, and that's what I, I would add. From my understanding of the statutes, commissioners have the ability to decide this decision. So, uh, if you decided to do something different from what the statute lines out, that is, if it was just the statute, we wouldn't need fence viewers. So ultimately, I do think it is a decision of the county commission to make this decision within the, um, what is outlined in statute. So it, it is really up to you. If you, if you wanted to vary from that, I think you certainly could.
I think it's justified in this case, given the, uh, treatment of the labor cost uh, and the relatively in a, relative inadequacy of a three strand fence.
Commissioners, I don't have any expertise on three strand versus four strand, and so I can't really weigh in on that. And I, you know, I appreciate Mr. Heard's opinion, but I don't know that, that that's whether we hire him to be a three strand or a four strand. I don't, I don't know about that. I'd just be interested to hear what other commissioners are thinking.
This is Commissioner Portillo. I, in reading the statute, it does seem like we have a lot of leeway here. I would say that I really appreciate that we have Mr. Heard, who did an actual walk of the property and is bringing some expertise to this. I think that if we were to wanna limit ourselves and say three strand, because three strand, strand is explicitly in the statute, I'd want to include labor costs. Because it is a lower amount to say just the materials for a four strand, I think that, given that James is here saying that that is what he would like, I, I would, I would be in favor of us going for the material cost of a four strand because it's less money. It actually gets to the goals of the property and is in line with the expert opinion of Mr. Heard and still seems within our statutory ability to do.
Ms. Commissioner Reed, I would agree with Commissioner Portillo. I think it's a good question and, um, but it does seem that giving the decision to us with some discretion, um, matters here and also ultimately that, the particular factor we have here with labor costs not factored in essentially makes it a mutually beneficial situation.
Four strand it is. That's fine. I just wanted to walk through it, make sure how, what our thinking was and, and get some feedback from, from Mr. Heard. Rick, thanks for doing all this work. I'm so glad you do fence viewings rather than us. So, appreciate that.
You're quite, you're quite welcome. It, it is a peculiar specialty.
So this is Commissioner Portillo. I would move to accept the findings of Richard Heard, the fence viewer, electing fence dispute and allocate the costs of the fence based upon the statute. Based upon the findings for a four strand fence without labor costs.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you for your time, Rick. Thank you for joining us this evening. Have a good rest of your night.
Thank you very much.
Take care. Go ahead and move on to item three point two, um, administration presentation. Is that you, Sarah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioners, I'm gonna, we're moving Justin Forty from Midco into the panel. Uh, I've had a number of conversations with Justin about this opportunity for Midco to apply for grant funds at the state. And I'll just turn it over to Justin and let him make his remarks.
Commissioners, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. My name is Justin Forty. I'm the Vice President of Government Relations for Midco. As many of you know, we're, uh, just reached our, our five-year anniversary of, uh, uh, the purchase of the Lawrence system and the surrounding area there. Uh, earlier this summer, we announced a thirty billion dollar upgrade to that to bring those speeds up to, uh, five gigabits symmetrical. And we've already begun that in areas of Lawrence, and, uh, that will be going to ten gigs, uh, for the next few years here as well. So we want to make sure that everybody there has state-of-the-art technology. However, as most of you know, over the past few years during the, uh, COVID nineteen, you know, that we still found, found that there was friends and neighbors, uh, outside of some of our communities that didn't have access to broadband service. Uh, as you know, the, uh, federal government has made a lot of money available for broadband, and we're really just at the beginning stages, uh, of those funds. Uh, the state of Kansas had a very small, uh, grant program, uh, prior to the last couple of years. But now with all the, uh, dollars available, just a few weeks ago, and in a very, uh, quick fashion, the state of Kansas announced about an eighty-three million dollar grant round to improve broadband in, uh, in areas of Kansas. Uh, with light of that program and, and just a few, uh, short notice, we took a look at similar areas that we haven't got yet been able to reach, in Douglas County, uh, with, with private capital. Uh, we have an extensive process that we go through each year to expand out, uh, from the systems we serve. But, uh, as many of you know, it, it with private capital, it's tough to reach those wires out to some of those more rural areas. Thus, we, uh, uh, have an application that's due to the broadband office with the state of Kansas, uh, Friday. We have, uh, put together a grant application, um, Douglas County, and we're here tonight seeking a letter of support. But additionally, uh, we've in talks with the, the broadband office. Uh, you know, they are really looking for the grants, uh, throughout the state that have, you know, the most local support and, and folks that are, are, are very interested in getting those grants. So one of the things they like to see is partnership with, uh, local government entities as well. So we're also requesting, uh, financial contribution of, of five thousand dollars towards that grant. Uh, we feel that, uh, that financial stake will improve the odds, uh, of this grant round as it will be highly competitive with, uh, I expect hundreds of millions of dollars to come in, in grants, requesting this funding from, uh, areas, uh, around the state, and we'd sure love to see it go to Douglas County residents. At this point, uh, I'd be happy to stand for any questions that you have, and you should have, uh, information and maps and a proposed letter and other information, uh, in your package as well.
We do. Thank you, Justin. Um, Commissioner Reed, any questions for Justin or staff about this item?
This is Commissioner Portillo. I really appreciate that applications that have local support will be looked at more favorably, and I do think this is an incredibly important thing for our community. I'm just kind of wondering, did you get any indication as far as expectations for local support? Are we in line with what other local communities and local partners are doing? Where did this number come from?
Not anywhere in particular. Uh, you know, we felt that it was a, a number that was, we, the Midco came up with. Kansas, of course, this is new, uh, but we work with programs in five states. We've seen counties, uh, pour millions of dollars into broadband grant programs in, in other, in other surrounding states, uh, counties at the county level. So, of course, every county's needs are, are a little bit different, but, um, uh, this is obviously a new program, uh, new here with Kansas. We felt like this was a number that the Midco came up with that showed the county was, was a, was a, was a partner in this. Also understanding that, you know, sh, this was very short notice. We had four weeks to put this grant together, and it was due Friday. You know, we certainly didn't want, didn't want to come forward with an ask that, that was a, a financial burden for a, uh, an unbudgeted and unplanned expense.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Ms. Commissioner Reed, uh, I'm just curious if you have had conversations with Ken Walker and Palmyra Township Board specifically, just, you know, in terms of maybe getting their letters of support too. I don't know how, I know you're on a tight deadline at this point, and I also don't know how impactful that would be, but just curious, since you have those two targeted geographic areas.
I have reached out to representatives of both, and one is considering, uh, some type of letter. The clerk is, is talking, trying to reach a few other people there. The other individual that I reached out to, uh, earlier today, I had not yet, uh, received a return phone call. I'm more than happy to visit with, uh, any residents, any elected officials, uh, anyone at all. Happy to, uh, give out my cell phone, um, and to anybody who would like to chat about any of these projects and, and happy to have all the local support that, that we can get. And, you know, hopefully, uh, in future grant rounds, that we'll have a little bit more time to, uh, uh, build relationships with township officials as well.
Thank you. Any other questions for Justin? Okay, we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. Do we have any general public comment? Please come forward. Not general public comment, sorry. Public comment on this item. Thanks for your patience.
Hi, my name is Bill Reynolds. My wife and family and I have lived at eight twenty-seven North seventeen ten Road for just about forty years. So we've seen everything there is to see in terms of internet development. When we talk to somebody today about dial-up, they don't know what that is. That's where you can be working on a document, and in the middle of it, it just stops and says, "This has been stopped due to inactivity." The end result is we do pay quite a bit for For our cell phone and internet service. Uh, quite a bit more than my children who live in it on Harvard. And, um, I just wanted to speak in favor of this grant. I think that rural development of broadband is something that is needed in a whole lot of places, including Douglas County. So, uh, fortunately, I was able to reach Justin this afternoon and get some information. I'm not an expert, but as a consumer. I would suspect that everybody in the rural areas would feel the same way. So I'd just like to add my support to their request. Um, I'll, I'll add that about every six months, AT&T contacts me and wanting me to sign up for their new broadband service. And I tell them, you don't provide service here. Yes, we do. So I tell them that, they signed me up for an account, they sent a truck out with a satellite dish. The guy comes up to the door and says, I'm sorry, we can't give you any service here. So that's just kind of what we deal with. So anyway, that's all I have to say. If I understand correctly, there's going to be another hearing on the revenue neutrality. Later on this month. I won't discuss that in detail here, but our experience is about the same as the lady described, only it's for a higher dollar amount. And, uh, just so that you know. The, what it would require us to do. Is to either sell the house and then not be able to find the same type of house for the same price. Or go ahead and pay the tax. And then you get the questions of, okay, what happens if all of a sudden inflation drops? And the price goes down, your praise value goes down. And now you've paid for a house that's $80,000 more. And you can't sell it for that. So I just mentioned that and and we can discuss that more in detail at the other meeting. Thank you for your time and your consideration. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody online that would like to provide public comment? Okay, we'll go ahead and close that and bring it back for discussion. Um, Mr. Reynolds, I appreciate your comments and they echo, um, much of what I've heard from residents in in my district and the rural parts of my district about, um, struggles with internet. And so I was excited to see this. Um, opportunity move forward and it's a start and I appreciate that midco is going after, um, some dollars to bring into the rural parts of our county and improve accessibility to to internet. Any further discussion amongst commissioners?
This is Commissioner Portillo. I, I echo what Commissioner Reed mentioned. This has been a major discussion at the state level. How do we expand broadband throughout our state? And I am really excited that Douglas County can take advantage of some of these state level dollars. Um, and hopefully expands some coverage in our rural areas. I'm very much in support of this.
Super in support of this. I, I believe that broadband is a utility and we have some work to do. Not only across the state, but as a country on, on figuring out how to get people broadband access. Um, is really a big divide. And so I appreciate midco stepping up here and and I'm, I'm pleased that we get to partner with them. Be honest with it because I think it's something that we need to, um, when we think about our families out in those rural areas. And the community members out in those rural areas. Um, as we've seen more people working at home and things like that, we, we need to make broadband more accessible. So, um, thanks for bringing it to us.
Do I hear a motion?
This is Commissioner Portillo. I moved to approve the $5,000 grant match in partnership with midco. And the Kansas State Office of Broadband Development.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Great. Thank you for being here, Justin. Have a good rest.
Thank you very much for having me and, uh, look forward to working very closely with this commission and and please keep track of, of folks in the county that need better broadband and let us know. Our first step will be able to see if there's anything we can do for them, uh, immediately, uh, through private capital.
Thanks. Have a good rest of your night.
Thank you.
Sure. Um. With that, we are going to move on to item, uh, 3.3 on a regular agenda, which is an executive session to consult with the county counselor regarding matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to protect the attorney-client privilege. Um, so I move that we recess into an executive session to consult with the county counselor regarding matters that would be deemed privileged in order to protect the attorney-client privilege. Sorry for the repeat. Also, attending will be the county administrator Sarah Plinsky and the Director of Behavioral Health Projects, Bob Tryansky. Will we, um, recess for 30 minutes?
I think we need to, yeah, 20, we could try 20 and and then come back for more, but I think it's probably 30.
Do 25 so we can add a restroom.
Sounds great. 25 sounds.
Okay, so 25 minutes brings us back at 6:50. Is what I have.
Sounds great.
Okay, second. This is Commissioner Reed. I am just coming back to put on the record that we are going to extend our executive session for another 15 minutes. And return at, uh, does that make it? Six, 10, nope, 710. Sorry about that. Uh, back at 710. Thank you. Our executive session by 15 more minutes, so a return at 725. Thank you. Come back. This Commissioner Reed, we are back on the record and back to our normal agenda. Our executive session has ended. Um, and just as a point of clarity, no action is taken during the executive session. Um, it's for discussion purposes only. So with that, we'll move on to appointments, which I don't think we have any to discuss tonight. So move right along to your memo, Sarah.
Uh, thank you, commissioners. Before I jump into my memo, I did hear from the county clerk as, as this commission knows, uh. We are working through the recount on the constitutional question. From what I understand, he believes they will need all of tomorrow to finish the recount. They are working really fast and furious, but they will need through tomorrow. Uh, his recommendation, uh, was that we plan to have the board come together for the canvas. Sometime after 10 o'clock Friday. So basically anytime after that. So he was completely comfortable with the commission deciding when you could meet for that canvas based on your calendars. And then I will communicate it back to him. And then we will notice the canvas, but it should probably be after 10 o'clock on Friday.
This Commissioner Reed, thanks for that update, Sarah. Uh, for me personally, I would. Um. I have conflicts between 1 and 3 PM essentially. That would be a different time for me.
I have conflicts between 11 and 1:30. Could we do a 3:30?
We could do 3:30.
3:30 works.
I think I'd feel better than doing it at 10 just to make sure he.
It's completed.
That they feel like they've done what they need to do. If we can, you can do, okay, I will tell him 3:30 Friday. Uh, if for some reason he tells me he'd rather do 10 to 11, that does appear to work. Or is it not good for you guys?
That's the EDC meeting.
Oh, what time does that end at 10:30?
Yeah.
Right. So let's just, we'll just tell him 3:30 Friday. That sounds great. I will let the clerk know and then we will notice it and I will confirm with the commission that we're on for 3:30. I assume we'll be meeting at the election office. Um, my memo is attached commissioners to the file. The, I would say that we've added, uh, there's a swearing in for the new fire chief. Uh, Rich Llewellyn coming up. I've added that to the memo. Please let me know if we're going to have more than two commissioners attend. We've added DECA's harvesting, Pope gathering. Plus a number of other events coming up in the next couple of weeks. Attached is the August legislative report from Little. Government Relations. And I believe commissioners, that is all I have for you tonight.
Sarah, this is Commissioner Portillo. Um, there may be one additional scheduling item that we need to notice. Both Commissioner Reed and I will be at the 45th, the anniversary of the Willow at Watkins on August 26. Let's say the 45th anniversary, is it 45th or the 50th?
It's 45th anniversary for the Willow, 50th anniversary for the care center.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Those numbers just kept both bouncing around.
50 years for DECA this year too. Lots of anniversaries.
Half of 50 years.
Right.
Feminism.
There you go. The February sisters were 50 years ago last year, so this is all coming out of that.
Any miscellaneous items from commissioners?
No.
Okay, seeing none, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.